All right, so we're going to reconvene the meeting back to order. Picking up where we left off, I just want to ask quickly, were we able to reach the appellate number three? I cannot say his last name, I apologize.
Gibowitz.
Gibowitz, okay.
I see Gibowitz.
Okay, were we able to reach him?
Yes, he's been notified, so he's going to do what he can to get here as soon as possible to review the hearing and we'll take it from there.
Great, okay. So then on that note, have the commissioners had time to read the resolutions that were rewritten for us?
We're going to go back and talk about these resolutions. Mr. Wooster needs to...
There we go again. Kind of flaky today, Commissioner Wooster.
I'm leaving again.
We're going to allow Commissioner Wooster to recuse himself again and then, once we get done reviewing these two items, we will allow him back into the room.
All right, and these two resolutions, they are very similar since the sites are very similar. Two, 593 is the one with the water board issues. 599 is not.
Okay, so do any of the commissioner have any questions? Are they happy with the way they're written? Do we need any changes, modifications, typos?
I'm happy.
That's unusual, and I'm very happy you're happy.
Which is even more unusual.
Yeah, it still amazes me. This statement says that all mail we sent him has come back?
To that address, yes. The mail we send him stuff, it comes back.
Did he try changing it to Valley Springs or Farmington?
We've tried what we can, but no one goes so far.
Did you talk to him about it?
We have been able to reach him through... He is aware that this is going on.
He didn't feel better.
I believe we've sent, yeah, we've sent mail to the address he has on file with the...
Water Board.
No, with the...
Did you?
Which very well may be the same address with the tax folks.
You're not talking about the Copperopolis address, you're talking about the Farmington address.
Right.
Is bad, right?
Yeah, so, for instance, we got our appeal packet back that was sent to that address just last week.
Does he use that address on the one that you received from September 15th that was stamped? And then he also has two phone numbers on there, are those the same as what you have on file?
Yes, those are the same phone numbers as we have on file.
Okay, and the address is just...
Right, and he is aware, like, we got a call asking for the continuance, so somehow he gets things. It's beyond me, but when all mail we send to that address gets returned and that we have never received an official update for the address.
Again, that address, for the record, when mail is sent to...
That address that he provided on his application.
Which is?
Which is 10...
10-420?
10-420 Hogan Dam Road, Farmington.
He consistently wrote Farmington.
Yep. It's in multiple places on his application, 10-420 Hogan Dam Road, Farmington.
So 1-0-4-2-0.
Yep, 1-0-4-2-0 Hogan Dam Road, Farmington, 9-5-2-3-0.
Okay. You say the appellate's representative was notified by the planning department of the need to have an individual present.
Correct.
Have an individual present, who was the representative?
It was some woman. I don't recall the name she gave me. She said she was calling for Willie Kirkpatrick and that he wanted a continuance. I didn't give the name much thought, I just, as I said, you've missed it.
Is she the one that stated she wants the continuance because he's trying to get representation?
She said that he had representation, that he just acquired it, and that that representation wasn't available for this week, and it was unclear the exact nature of why, but, again, I...
And she is not the representative.
Correct, and I stated to her that they missed the deadline and that someone needed to be here in person. And I have multiple planning staff overheard that conversation on the phone.
Should we clear this up? Instead of calling her, the appellate's representative, you can state that you received a phone call from an unknown person?
Sure.
Do you think that's important to do? Because if we're saying she's the representative, but that yet they have, we're stating the reason we didn't give a continuance is because they didn't even give us in writing who's going to be their representative, it's kind of conflicting.
So, a phone call on behalf of the appellate's...
Yes, that would be great.
Okay.
And while we're in that, I know I said I was happy.
[laughing].
I think we ought to mention in that whereas, that on the phone call on behalf of the appellate, I'm sorry, in the next whereas, I think we need to indicate that it was stated that he had retained counsel, but there was no explanation of the exact nature, or something like that.
Well, that's why I wrote the exact nature, because even the fact, like, you retained counsel, he didn't really say why that was a good reason.
No, I know.
Because the fact that you have counsel, that isn't a reason to have a continuance.
Well, no, I think it's just that, okay, I'm sorry, keep that, the earlier whereas paragraph, the next before that, I think, we might mention that it was claimed or stated that he had retained counsel, but with no further details provided, or something like that.
And it wasn't stated by Mr. Kirkpatrick.
No, I understand that. I'm just trying to cover ourselves here.
I agree.
When it gets around to the Board of Supervisors, I don't want anybody saying, "Oh, well, yes, the exact nature was stated, he had counsel." So...
I agree with you.
Okay, so let's see if we come up with a specific.
Shouldn't we also mention in here that we made, or the county council actually telephoned him during the meeting?
I thought that was already instructed to be in here.
I don't see it.
I wanted that in there.
Oh, you did?
I did, because I think it's important, when it gets to the supervisors on appeal, if it does, that they know that we made every attempt and that we did not get any response.
And we are putting this in both of these, correct?
Correct.
I'd say it would be a new whereas after the fifth one, between the fifth and current six.
See, with that vote...
So, I mean, this brings up a really interesting conversation, and you obviously don't know how, but if all of the mail got kicked back, and you use the word "all of the mail," how does this person know that they're being denied? And how did they know to file an appeal?
I don't know.
Can I chime in a little bit? Oh, please.
Please.
I just went back to the project file, and I noticed on the actual application that he submitted for the registration, the physical address was Valley Springs and the mailing address was Farmington. So, a lot of the mail, like the denial letter, did go out to the Farmington address. The staff report, it looks like, went to the Valley Springs address, so, and there's also the copper address, which was duplicated on the notice, so...
Oh, so, copper address was duplicated, there we go.
So, I'm sure he got the notice, because when I did do the notice, I noticed there was a copper address as far as the mailing address. And it came up off of the assessors, unless that's changed.
Well, and it was also published.
But it wasn't all of the mail. He did get a lot of the mail that was not returned when it went to the Farmington address.
Okay, so the copper address is what's on file with the assessor, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, so that's how he was able, so when we see things kicked back, kicked back...
It was on the Valley Springs address.
We double-checked with the assessor, see if there's any additional addresses available, and then we'll send them back out, so that's how he got his denial, original denial notice.
Okay, so we need to clear the language up in here, as Commissioner Bocelli brought up and said "all mail," because now it's not accurate.
All mail sent to that address.
And that's fair. I mean, it was, it's the address he gave officially for communication, and all mail sent to that address was returned.
And he never responded to directing his address?
On his registration, the physical address stated it was the 10...
10-420.
Physical was Valley Springs, but the mailing, he did indicate that it was Farmington on his registration.
Yeah, so, that is the address on the application, and the evidence states, "All materials mailed to the address provided by applicant on the application are returned to postal service as," and they are. We can get through to some other addresses here and there if we get stuff back, but the reason we need an official change of address is so we can get that in the file on the application, so that make sure that we don't accidentally send stuff to the address that he said is the person.
So now I'm having a complete issue with this one, I'm sorry. But when I'm listening to all of this, I have no confirmation that he received notice that the hearing was today. I have no confirmation of that. You got a phone call from an unknown person, which was not him, and that's bothersome to me.
There is one possible way he did get notice, and that is, the, you say the...
The copper address.
The copper address was used for the packet.
The Stafford.
Or this packet or the last one?
For the notice.
This notice, not the last one?
The notice of public hearing.
Of today.
Yes.
Remember, he had a continuance.
Oh, he didn't have a continuance, never mind.
That's my problem.
That's where I'm confusing myself, thank you. Okay, so, he was noticed, we know for sure he was noticed, and so the woman that called that was unknown...
She must have known, because they received it at the copper address, that's my assumption.
Okay.
And this is why that regulation is in the ordinance, to prevent these things from happening.
So I wanted to put in here as well that this was advertised to public notice, so the public was noticed, so that he had two forms of notification in my mind. He got it in the mail and he also received, it was noticed to the public. I just need to cover us on this one. It's just confusing. Okay, are there any other changes?
Well, I think I can suggest a change, about the claiming that he had counsel. Scott, if you have that well in mind, you could say, "Whereas, a person calling on an appellate's behalf requested a continuance telephonically after the 72-hour deadline set forth in Planning Commission Rules of Procedure."
That's a really good point, because it was after the 72 hours, that needs to be done.
Well, that's in here, that's in here. And, oh no, and then, semicolon, "In said conversation, the person calling said that appellate had retained counsel," comma, "and said person was notified by the planning department of the need to have an individual present at the hearing," had retained counsel who was unnamed.
He retained unnamed.
Okay.
Okay. So much for being happy, I'm sorry.
Everybody happy?
Yep.
And those changes will be affected, although we're not voting on the other one yet, but to both resolutions.
Correct.
Okay. Okay?
Yeah, and you're getting in the thing about that Ethan made the phone call from here.
Yes, phone call made, I'm correct, saying, during the consideration.
Every man has a made a phone call, there was a cell phone and a house.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so...
All known.
Scott, can I ask you for a favor?
Yeah.
Could you read into the record 2016-593 as amended?
Okay. Staff recommends that the planning commission pass a resolution denying 2016, pass resolution 2018-013 to, oh, which one are we on? That's the wrong one. See, you get these mixed up. Planning staff recommends that the planning commission pass resolution number 2018-010 to deny appeal 2016-593. Appeal, planning directors denial of medical cannabis cultivation registration application 2016-593 as amended.
Thank you.
And the "as amended" is going to include, the stuff about the continuance is going to be the same on this one as the other. I so move that we adopt that "as amended."
Okay, have a first, second, can I have all the ayes say yes, please? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero. The appellate will have 15 days from today to appeal this to the Board of Supervisors. Okay, are we ready to open the next hearing?
Well, we have...
We have to open.
We have number five, right.
Yes, we have to reopen 2018-013. We have already made some recommended changes to the resolution. I'm sorry?
Who was the movement seconded for that last one, sorry?
We have Commissioner Lattish and Karen. So, if there's not any further discussion on this resolution, we're going to refer back to the changes on 2016-593 to also be incorporated into 2016-599. And if you have nothing further and you're ready for the recommendation, we will have Scott read it.
All the changes that pertain to the continuance.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I'm sorry, continuance or the appeal?
The, it's, where it's reciting the stuff about the continuance. Now, it seems to me we're mixing the two things together in this resolution. Do we need a separate resolution denying the continuance?
We already have one. We voted to deny.
Well, I know we voted to deny. We don't need to have anything that in writing in resolution form?
No, because we didn't adopt any resolution, we just denied a continuance.
Okay, great.
Okay.
So, what I was saying was that the, in the 013, we're going to include all the changes that we made in the recitation regarding the continuance.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Perfect. Can you please read that?
All right, "Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution 2018-013 to deny appeal 2016-599. Appeal, the planning directors denial of medical cannabis cultivation registration application 2016-599 as amended."
Thank you.
I so move.
Go ahead.
She seconded it.
Okay, we have first, a motion by Commissioner Lattish, second by Commissioner Sisk. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries four zero, and the appellate needs to be aware that they have 15 days to appeal this to the Board of Supervisors from today. Can we please, yes, thank you. You're awesome. What, you missing? I don't even know where we're at, I gotta find my place, I'm sorry. No, this one we're still looking at, this one's been denied here. Okay, number 2016-537. Got it? Nope.
Do you receive my email as amended?
As far as I could tell, there was just one thing that we had, one communication we had not received. The other things we had, right?
So, after further review, it seemed that I had requested to include the email from Thomas with the 10-day...
I'm sorry, you know what, because we're in public and I can't have you speaking to us up here without being on camera, saying what you got to say so the world can hear you. You're going to get me in trouble.
Give us, give us your paper.
Yeah, you can just say it at the podium.
So, I wanted to include the communication for the next appeal, between the code compliance officer giving the 10-day for proof of corrections and the email response from the appellate, just so you guys have verification of the dates that those emails went out in the packet for 537.
Has the appellate received this?
No, we'll make sure you get a copy. I didn't get this email. Can we have just one second to review these notes, please?
Of course.
Have you seen these?
No.
Okay, neither have I, so I'd like just a few minutes to read through them, if it's okay.
Right.
You ready to go? If you're okay with it, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so we will get started, and Madeline, would you like to give us our presentation?
Madeline Flandreau, this is appeal of the denial of commercial cannabis cultivation registration 2016-537 for Kerr and Houghton. And the appellate came to the department, the planning department, yesterday afternoon and wanted to come before you today to request a continuance, so I don't know if we want to have him come up and make that request.
Okay. Would you like to come up and make a request for a continuance?
His lawyer is Adrian Lambie, he called me yesterday and said that you had been retained by Mr. Hotten.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm here to just ask for a continuance so that he can prepare for you guys in a month from now.
When did you retain him?
A couple of weeks ago.
Okay, and he couldn't be available for today?
Yeah, and there's, his recommendations for me didn't work. Yesterday, I came to the planning department to withdraw my application.
Could you speak up a little bit?
Yesterday, I came to the planning department to withdraw my application, and, because he was under the impression that I could withdraw my application, but there's some type of discussion going on.
You mean withdraw the appeal for today and to continue it?
No.
You're going to withdraw your application completely for cultivation?
Yeah, I was thinking of doing that, but then I wasn't able to do that yesterday, so, and he didn't know that that was possible. That's not the only reason, we need time to prepare, or he needs time to prepare for this, so...
If you're going to withdraw, well, I don't want to give, I don't want to get into the middle of the legalities of this, because you have representation and you need to take that advice.
Exactly, yeah.
So, basically what it boils down to is you are asking for a continuance so that you can be here with proper representation and your attorney.
Yes.
Okay.
Why did you not make the request for a continuance before yesterday?
Because I was going to withdraw yesterday, my application.
And his attorney's obviously given him different advice that we don't want to conflict with.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Okay, so, discussion will be on offering him a continuance. Does staff have an objection to a continuance?
I don't care.
None? Okay.
Any public comment?
None. Any public comment on this continuance? No, it's all closed, public comment? Bring it back to the commissioners for deliberation.
Seems to me if there's thought of withdrawing his application, and he has legal counsel to advise him as to that or other alternatives, are you, you're not growing now?
No. I grow outdoor full season, so...
I'm in favor of it, continuing it. And I think, given the fact that he's obtained representation, intended to withdraw, and then has had further discussions with his counsel, that this is a very different case from a situation where we don't know who the counsel is or what the issues might be. So, I have no objection to the continuance.
Okay, so, is, just for the sake of asking, are you also asking for the same continuance on application number 541?
Both of them.
Both of them, okay. I would, yeah, I would like to be able to consolidate for the purposes of continuance if you're okay with it.
Okay, yes.
Okay, all right, so we would be looking at doing a continuance for application 2016-537 and 2016-541. And does anybody want to make, let me also make sure I go to public comment on the second continuance, make sure there's no public comment.
How much time do you need?
later.
Uh, Mr. Gibbelwitz is currently watching the video in the planning department.
Beautiful, glad to hear that.
How long has he got, five minutes?
That won't work.
So, this agreement was made on February 13th?
And it is a agreement between both the planning department and the appellant, so...
It'd be nice to be informed of such a thing.
I believe he was waiting for a written response from the appellant but hadn't received it, and that's why he was so late in getting it to the commission.
Okay.
Thank you. Hello, commissioners, I would like to go to public comment and see if anybody has any comment on this before we start, does anybody from the public have a comment on continuing this? Item number 2016-965 and 2016-976, seeing nobody coming to the mic, I'm going to close public hearing, bring it back for deliberations with the commissioners.
Is there a specific item?
Yes.
Is that good?
It is good.
All right.
Okay, wait. Oh, okay. I think we are going to consolidate, that's why I read both numbers into the record for the public, okay, so, I need, I need a motion to agree to the continuance with, continuance with a date certain of March 8th for 2016-965 and 2016-976. Can I get a motion?
I would so move.
Thank you, and a second.
I'll say.
Okay, so Commissioner Battellio and Ladish, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, motion carries 5-0, we are going to take a, I don't know how long of a break.
Mr. Gibbelwitz is on his way, I've just been informed.
Can we still take a five-minute break, or no?
It's up to you, you're the chair, you're the boss.
He's opening the door, we'll continue.
Yes.
So I can send Mr. Battellio home.
Your timing is great.
We still have to wait for Scott, you can have a five-minute break.
Five-minute break.
Yes, I got to get, are we ready? Mister, and please, could you come up to the mic for just one moment? I have a really difficult last name, but you have a difficult one too, we'd like to pronounce your name correctly.
You did actually pronounce it correctly, Gibbelwitz.
Gibbelwitz, so I did?
Yeah, or unless you're...
No, 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 no.
Speaking with my father, it's Giblevich, but Gibbelwitz, Gibbelwitz, Gibbelwitz works.
Perfect, okay, thank you, Mr. Gibbelwitz, I did it. Okay, now I know how people feel on the other side trying to say my name. We were wanting to get from you, if you probably haven't signed anything, but at least verbal and on camera that you have watched the video of the hearing that we had, and that you are satisfied to move forward with what you have watched.
I am.
And you're going to waive your rights to missing that portion of the hearing?
Yes.
Meaning that you, you're good with all this and we're going forward and you have heard everything we had to say?
Yeah, and I appreciate this little second chance today of being able to plead my case, so, thank you.
Okay, so on that note, I am going to open the hearing for, I've got to go back, 2016-209, this is reopening the hearing because we heard the case, we voted to uphold the appeal, Mr. Gibbelwitz got here as soon as it was...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, it's 2016-929, correct?
Yes.
Also, we probably should have his statement be part of the open hearing, I mean, we're opening the hearing.
I just realized that. Okay, so, do you have an issue?
You had a different number.
I did?
1929, correct, so let's just keep going.
Okay, let's keep going, sorry, 2016-929, we are going to open the hearing, and Mr. Gibbelwitz has watched the video of our hearing that we held, and he is before us here today waiving his rights to the fact that he knows we've already had a portion of the hearing and staff has spoken and we have spoken, and we are going to give him an opportunity to respond to our hearing, we agreed to this earlier, and we voted to allow ourselves to reconsider based on his comments, so, you get your 15 minutes of fame.
Okay, this is all new to me, so I really don't understand this procedure completely, so, what do you require from me?
So, here's what, here's what would be required of you, you filed an appeal because you disagreed with the code compliance or the planning department's decision of the denial, and so this is your opportunity to prove to us why they're wrong, and convince us and bring evidence forward to us to make us want to overturn their decision and prove them wrong, so, basically, everything is on you now to prove them wrong, and you've got the attention of the five commissioners to do so. You can rebuttal anything that they've said on tape earlier, and this is your opportunity, so you do have a copy of why you were denied, correct?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
This is what it was.
Yes, so, basically what you're going to do is use your 15 minutes to go through there and say they were wrong, they were wrong, here's my evidence.
Okay. First off, I mean, everything that they said or took pictures of, that was correct, we were in a process of getting everything fixed, as of when everything needed to be completed, the 10 days or 11 days, by that time, pretty much everything was taken care of, all the, you know, little things, the fences were up, the, the gate, fences were up, the gates were up, the locks were in place, the generators, they were housed, kind of have a question about housing generators, it seems like, how we have generators housed now, I've built boxes with, that are insulated, and also we purchased soon after that a diesel generator that's housed, and I guess that is okay, because our two neighbors passed inspections with almost identical generators, so I'm assuming that is correct as well. The only thing that I haven't acquired yet is the grading permit, and I'm being slowed down on that, because I require a WDID number from the water board, and the water board has been a bit of a trick to kind of get on the same page with, and finally, I just spoke with Nathan, I guess the newest person who's been assigned to this case, there's just been a lot of people turning over at the water board, so I have, seems like I have to start from scratch all the time, and they finally are seeing my case, so, I'm waiting back from the water board to get the WDID number from them, and then go forward with the county here to get my grading permit. We were in the burn area, so, after the burn, there's a lot of dead trees around, and my brother, the landlord, he happened to get a bulldozer guy to come out and just clear all the brush, and he did not get a grading permit for that, and apparently, you know, he cleared more than 1,000 square feet or cubic yard, I forgot exactly how that goes, so, we have to get engineered plans, so there's this whole process we have to go through, and essentially, we're waiting for the water board to give us that number, to hire out the contractors, to do the engineering, to do a little more bulldozing work, to work with the erosion that took place before, then we can start laying gravel and the fabric and the wattles and the straw, we have all that on hold, just waiting to have it delivered until, you know, we have all the grading and everything else taken care of, so that's really the only thing that's stopping right now is that grading permit, everything else is in place. The only question I kind of have is with the shed permit being required, the shed, the two sheds that are on site are the sheds that were given to us by the Mennonites, and they're, I think they're eight by 10 feet, so they didn't require a permit, at least at that time, so, that's why I'm a little confused on if I require a permit for that shed, or do I need a permit for a shed that has electrical in it, and electrical that was in there was all pulled out, the next day or day after that was just a temporary extension cord with a power strip, so there's no longer any loose, what, extension cords going to sheds or, you know, miscellaneous power cords anywhere, and trailer permits, I also have the trailer permits, the outdoor shower, that's been removed.
I'm sorry, what?
Say that again.
I'm sorry, the outdoor shower that was out there, that was, yeah, removed, it really wasn't being used.
Have you submitted pictures of any of this to code compliance or to the county?
They were, I was out of town at the time, getting a camper, so I wasn't there on the last day where everything needed to be submitted, so I asked my helper friend to email everything to the county here, and apparently, he, he claimed that he did, and in the video, I just heard that some of the, some of the photos, I guess, were submitted, but it wasn't clear, it wasn't good enough, and, and I didn't know about it being not good enough until I got denied back in, sorry, December, I think it was, or November, whenever that was, so, you know, I made, I made an effort to get the photos in, but that just, for whatever reason, didn't go through, and where we're, where we're at, we have very little cellphone reception, so, and that's where he claimed that he sent the photos from with his phone, and knowing him, you know, he's down in LA, he probably thought that he could load up his phone full of pictures and send them all at once, so, I don't know what, where the error took place with him on that, however, I do have photos of, of all we repaired.
Are they date stamped?
Shoot, no.
Okay.
But they were just as...
Do you have a copy of his email that he sent showing that he had those emails attached?
He can't find it, and I was kind of hoping that the planning commission had, or, you know, the county had a copy of that email, but I, no, I don't have copies.
You can submit your photos to an app that we can look at.
So, trying to get as organized as possible with this whole fire, everything taking place, and not knowing if we're going to allow it to grow this year, next year, what can we make permanent, what not make permanent, it's just, it's been very unstable the last couple of years.
When was the email sent, I guess it was 10 days or so?
Yeah, it was like, end of May, it was towards, I mean, I could get you an exact date now, still try tracking that down, but I was just made aware of that email didn't go through, to the extent that it did, just a few minutes ago.
So are you saying that you corrected everything on the correction list that you received? Is that the statement that you're making today?
No, the only thing that I didn't get, what I didn't accomplish or complete is the grading permit from the county.
Okay, that's understandable.
That one, and then the shed.
But you applied within the 10 days?
Well, they told me they, they needed that number, in order for me to make any sense, they needed that number, and then for me to get that number, I had to go to the water board, then I had to get a site management plan, and then that took a few months.
And how soon did you apply for that?
Right away, I had, like, within days of that with Terry Strange, and...
Do you have anything with a date on it that would show us that you acted immediately on trying to resolve that?
Right here, at this moment of now, no, however, I know I have something there corresponding with them, I'm pretty positive, it's in that big BMP manual that he gave me when we first started correspondence, but I do have a receipt that I did pay for it, and he delivered it on November 18th of 2017, so, I mean, I do have that already, and the water board just found, received that, the water quality report that was due, and also...
What's the date of the letter in front of you?
Well, this is, says November 18th, 2017, that he delivered that booklet finally.
That he delivered what?
That he completed that site management plan.
Okay.
And he handed it to me at, right before Thanksgiving, this last Thanksgiving, November 18th.
And on the sheds, they were purchased at the eight by 10 level because they didn't require permits, but if you added water or electrical to them, that was where your issue was?
Okay, I'm sorry.
The sheds, eight by 10, were acceptable, the minute you put electrical or water to them, they needed a permit.
That's why that all got ganked, or taken out.
When did you email these photos? Under the email?
Those, those actual photos, I've taken within the last few weeks of now, but those photos that were emailed, they were emailed towards the end of, I got to say, like, May 21st or May 20th?
It was May 26th, we, we had that date.
May 26th?
Yeah.
When was the?
Of 2017, according to our, our staff report, and I think Mr. Watts can confirm that, he's the one who received the email.
Well, were the photos...
I'm sorry.
Were the photos that were emailed on May 26th, are those the same photos that we've just been handed?
Oh, negative, they were not, those are, if I, if I understood what the appellant just said, those are new additional photos of the, of the site, is that, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, those are, those aren't the ones that, those are pictures I took myself, the ones that were emailed to the county back in May, my helper, he, he actually took those photos on his phone and sent them out, because that's when he completed the fence, because he was helping me with the fence.
So, Pete, go ahead. So, when were the photos we've been handed, been taken, or when were they taken?
Within the last two weeks, one of them was taken just a few days ago, the one, one of the gates.
There's only a few of these, can, can you go through each one, do you have a set in front of you? Because we only have two sets.
No, I don't, I'm sorry.
We'll pass this one back down so he can have a copy.
What I would like is for him to go through each of these and tell us if they fairly and accurately show us whatever it's depicting, each picture, one at a time, as of May of 2017, rather than two weeks ago when you took these pictures, was it the same then? Was for, number one here, it shows the, I guess it's the gate with the sign posting, is that the way it was in a lot of part of May of 17? And this next issue or picture, it looks like a box, plywood box?
Yeah, that is the one that I just most recently took, and that was, we moved that from the well, because I guess we needed a housing over the generator by the well, but now we have a solar pump in that well, so I guess we don't really require...
But back in, back in May, this box was used...
but I do have a receipt that I did pay for it, and he delivered it on November 18th of 2017. So, I mean, I do have that already, and the water board just found, received that, the water quality report that was due, and also.
What's the date of the letter in front of you?
Well, this says November 18th, 2017, that he delivered that booklet finally.
Has he delivered what?
That he completed that site management plan.
Okay.
And he handed it to me right before Thanksgiving, this last Thanksgiving, November 18th.
And on the sheds, they were purchased at the eight by 10 level because they didn't require permits, but if you added water or electrical to them, that was where your issue was?
Okay, I'm sorry.
The sheds, eight by 10, were acceptable. The minute you put electrical or water to them, they needed a permit.
That's why that all got ganked, or taken out.
When did you email these photos?
Those, those actual photos, I've taken within the last few weeks of now, but those photos that were emailed, they were emailed towards the end of, I gotta say, like, May 21st or May 20th?
It was May 26th, we had that date.
May 26th?
Yeah.
When was the?
Of 2017, according to our staff report, and I think Mr. Watts can confirm that, he's the one who received the email.
Well, were the photos.
I'm sorry.
Were the photos that were emailed on May 26th, are those the same photos that we'd just been handed?
Oh, negative, they were not. Those are, if I understood what the appellant just said, those are new additional photos of the site. Is that?
Yeah, yeah, those are, those aren't the ones that, those are pictures I took myself, the ones that were emailed to the county back in May. My helper, he actually took those photos on his phone and sent them out, because that's when he completed the fence, because he was helping me with the fence.
So when were the photos we've been handed, been taken, or when were they taken?
Within the last two weeks. One of them was taken just a few days ago, the one, one of the gates.
There's only a few of these. Can you go through each one? Do you have a set in front of you? Because we only have four sets.
No, I don't.
We'll pass this one back down so he can have a copy.
What I would like is for him to go through each of these and tell us if they fairly and accurately show us whatever it's depicting, each picture, one at a time, as of May of 2017, rather than two weeks ago when you took these pictures. Was it the same then?
Yeah.
Was, number one here, it shows the, I guess it's the gate with the sign posting, is that the way it was in a lot of part of May of 17? And this next issue or picture, it looks like a box, plywood box?
Yeah, that is one that I just most recently took, and that was, we moved that from the well, because I guess we needed a housing over the generator by the well. But now we have a solar pump in that well, so I guess we don't really require.
But back in, back in May, this box was used to put over a generator?
Only for a few days, because my brother, right away, went and bought one of those diesel generators. A big diesel generator that's all housed and enclosed.
It's self-contained.
Yeah.
But this, the box that this picture shows was on site, in place, covering a generator in May of 2017. The next one is a couple of cattle gates. What does that represent?
That, that represents, that's, because there's three sites on that property to make up to 22,000 square feet. That shows the entrance to one of the sites with the locking gate, there is a lock on there, and also the permit that needs to be posted.
And is that the way those gates were in May of 17?
Correct.
You said that there was more than one row of sites, so they're all fenced in, correct? Are they all posted?
They're all posted, and they all, yeah, they all have.
But you only took pictures of one?
No, there should be three.
Oh, okay.
And I do have, actually, a dated correspondence with Terry Strange back in June 1st, 2016, for our site assessment. This is before I was, yeah, so, I mean, I do have correspondence with him.
That's good.
That I wanted him to work with us, but everything was taking time, between his schedule, our schedule, it just took a while.
The next gate picture, what does that show us?
It shows, okay, that's the third one now, and that is the signage based as, you know, to the code, the gate and the lock on there, and the completed fence.
And is this the way it looked and was installed in May of 2017?
Correct.
When were these pictures taken?
Two weeks ago.
All within the last two weeks, and that box, that was, that was taken like two days ago.
But you're not using the box now, but back in May you did.
Yeah, well, this box, I'll use if it's raining or something, but I gotta like, you know, I mean, I just have that as like what we had on site at the time.
What does this next picture show us?
Fencing, incomplete, and this is security, or, it's not important now, from what I understand, but the privacy screening, there's that privacy screening all the way towards the back. I just took a picture of that just to say like, hey, I even put privacy screening on anything that's, you know, kind of shows private road or any kind of road, so.
So you had completed this fencing in May of 17?
Correct.
Is there any way for you to find out exactly when your partner, whatever he was, sent the email to the counties with the original set of pictures?
Isn't that what he says?
No, that's why I'm asking him.
I just wanted to know if he knew that, because that, your due date for those pictures was May 21st. They gave you 10 days to send the pictures in, and that was dated on this form that you signed, saying that you had 10 days to do it. This form was signed by you, May 11th.
That came in late, and I'm just finding out today, actually, that it was May 26th, and that when he told me that he sent it, so I need to find out why it was sent so late. But he claimed that, you know, he claimed everything was all done within those 11 days, or 10 days, 11 days, which they were, because I literally like took off, left just right before that due date, and I had to go and, you know, secure a couple of things, and that's why I was out of town. And then I got back probably like the 26th, so I'm kind of a little surprised right now with this whole 26th date right now, what I was told, so, and I am going to investigate a little bit deeper on that, and so hopefully I can get pictures from back then that I could probably get also timestamped, because cell phones should, you know, should be able to timestamp.
You're gonna ask.
That is where the shower used to be.
Used to be.
Yeah, and we just, I mean, it's, there's so much cleanup around there between fire, you know, with the fire debris that, there's no shower there.
So opposed to the removal of the shower.
The propane tank, the hose, yeah, water, everything for the shower, that's all gone. All that's left is some of the timber and the T-posts are stuck in there, and our T-post pole are broke, so just another thing to get.
Now, all the questions that you've been asked about if this is the way it was last May, I'd like to add to that, is this the way it was during, before the end of the 10-day period last May? Apparently, the email was actually sent after the 10-day period expired. I'm trying to, I'd like to get testimony from you, direct testimony. See, you have the burden of proof here, and so we want to make, give you a full chance to prove your case. And I want to ask you whether what we have been seeing in these photographs, which I understand was taken, were taken in the last two weeks, that all those conditions existed before the expiration of the 10-day period?
Yes, yes.
Even if the email was later than that, you had done all that in that 10-day period, and the only thing left outstanding was the grading, which you had to rely upon getting a number from the water board?
That is correct.
That's your testimony, right? Thank you.
And, yeah, that's pretty much all I have.
Okay, so if you have any closing comments you want to add, and then we're going to go and see if there's any public comment, or if the staff has any rebuttal.
The only, you know, on the closing comment is, you know, I mean, yeah, I know I probably, you know, I know I had to get, had everything done even before the inspection came out, but once again, now, this excuse is coming to an end, but just going through a fire, losing everything, and just trying to figure out what the laws are, what the rules are, and get everybody to agree on the projects, and get all the finances, all the resources all together. It was a bit of a challenge to put everything together. However, you know, we're starting to gain traction on the projects, I mean, we're starting to get settled, we're starting to, you know, get some stability of everyday life out there. So during that time, it was really, you know, really chaotic. And on another note, too, is during the time of fire, I was in escrow on a piece of property right next door, so I knew that this whole, you know, cannabis thing was going to be taking place, so that's why I purchased that piece of property. And during that time, during the inspection, all this needed to take place, I was dealing with a whole other lawsuit, because the owner of the property, the seller of the property, he completely went back, I'm sorry, went back on his agreement, so I was in a lawsuit with him, dealing with a whole other set of lawyers, a whole other set of circumstances, and my whole PG&E settlement, so there was just a lot going on at that time. And like I said, now we're finally, things are starting to settle, and we're trying to get, and, you know, my brother just got paid out by PG&E just a few weeks, however long ago it was. I'm about to get mine, so the finances are coming to take care of all the little things and get the actual building going, too, you know, getting all the power back on, getting everything all back together. So we're doing the best we can with what we have, however, it hasn't been an easy ride.
Okay.
Thank you for your time again.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see anybody in the public that would want to speak, but Mr. Officer Watts, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I can answer questions if you can.
But I do have a question. So, these dates, so he had, back in May, he needed to get those photos to you within the 10-day period?
Yeah.
And you went, did you go back out to the property in November?
No, I'm not sure where November came from.
Because I'm looking at all these dates of 10/31, November 1st, November 2nd, and I'm wondering if things looked different from when you were there in May, June, November? What is this?
November, this is coming from the planning email.
Oh, that's the other one, sorry. I have a wrong piece of paper in my hand, sorry. Don't listen to me.
She's just keeping you awake.
It just, yeah, stay awake. Thanks, that was a good excuse. Confused myself, I'm like, what the heck is going on? Okay.
That application was denied in November when planning department finally got.
Around to it. Okay, that's not what I was looking at, though, I had a wrong note in my hand.
You've only been on this property once?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and the email that you got in response, we can see we had notes on, and there were attached photos, and you've seen only two corrections being done in those photos, the rest were not corrected.
I wish I had more for you on this one. It seems that I didn't save this email when it came in. I can't remember what the photos looked like, but clearly from this email that's included, the one that I sent to planning, the photos weren't sufficient to show that the corrections had been made.
Are those photos in this packet?
No, I don't think we have those photos.
Do you recall if you would have sent back and said these photos are deficient and we need something better?
No, I don't think I, I'm going to guess I didn't reply to it, based on the fact there's nothing else in the file, other than the original inspection report and the photos from the site inspection.
And the email was five days late?
Well, that's what, I'm not sure.
So.
What email, what was the date on the email you did receive?
So I inspected the site on May 11th. I issued a 10-day correction notice there in person, so that deadline was May 21st. Then May 26th, I still hadn't received any, any photos, any emails, anything like that.
So on May 26th, from Thomas to, you sent forward photos or PDF files, recommendation for denial plus photos. On May 26th, you forward photos and attachments to?
I sent a recommendation for denial in the morning, and then later on that day, these photos came in beyond the deadline.
Who's CCR, what is that to? What is?
That's a general planning email address.
Okay, there's an email of Friday, May 26th, at 4:12:34, it says, "This registered has just sent some photos of a new fence," although the photos don't show the whole fence, "and have been submitted well beyond the deadline." But whatever those photos were is not attached to the email that I have in my file.
No.
Now, my question is, were those photos just of a fence, or did they include things like gates and locks, and a torn-out shower, and a housed generator, and corrected posting?
I'm afraid I can't recall that.
If, do you have a copy of what you did get sent?
No, that's what I'm saying, in this case, I didn't save the email.
It just got deleted?
It would have, yeah, it would have sat in my email inbox, and then the county systems delete emails after 60 days.
Okay, if the photos had include, if the email that he sent to you on the 26th of May had included photos of things other than the new fence, would you have put that in the email?
It's possible.
And so it's possible also that, that he sent you a whole series of photos, including things other than the new fence, but you didn't mention that in the email?
But no, based on the fact that there's only two images attached to this email, I think, I'm going to assume from that that there was only a picture of the fence.
What would the PDF files been?
The correction notice and the inspection report.
Did you get, it doesn't reference that you received anything for that, so these weren't a continuation of fixes coming through, this was the only?
No, because I'd already submitted the recommendation for denial at this point.
Got it, so the 10 days were up, you submitted your recommendation?
Yeah, it just so happened that I submitted the recommendation on the same day that these photos came in.
Got it.
They came in just afterwards.
So, just because of the world of electronics that I live in, I will tell you guys that if you're in an area with really bad reception, and you go to send an email out with attachments, and it doesn't go, when you finally go and drive down the road and you're in an area that has reception, even if it's five days later, that email can still go.
I agree with you, and the only thing I have to say against that is, it was still his responsibility to make sure that those were in to the county in 10 days. Whether he drove it, emailed them, whatever, he had 10 days.
We'll get to our, to my comments later.
So can you, I'm so sorry, you go ahead.
Do you feel confident that the corrections themselves were not made within 10 days? Or do you just have lack, I mean, I want to phrase this in a neutral fashion. You don't, you don't have any evidence to prove it one way or another, it's just that you got, what you got was incomplete.
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, I don't have any evidence to suggest that the corrections were completed within 10 days, just the fact that some photos came in, what, five days after the deadline.
Oh, this is, okay, so we need to, do you have more questions?
No, but we have rebuttal and rebuttal.
I thought we said.
Okay, fair enough. Does it, okay, thank you. Mr. Gibowitz, would you like to rebut any rebuttal, anything that was just said at the mic, not from the chair?
No, the, really, the only thing would be that email. He told me that he sent, you know, attachments, a bunch of photos, he sent it. Once again, I don't know what took place between the day it was due and, you know, the few days afterward, five days afterwards, so right now, I have nothing really to say other than I gotta do some research.
Did he look through his phone and look for those photos and see if they're date stamped?
He couldn't, when I asked him if he could send me some of those photos, he said he would look for them, but he never told me when he sent, you know, when that email went through.
Does he still have the emails on his phone?
He didn't have them handy when I spoke with him back in beginning of January.
I'm only asking because if he took those photos before the 10-day period, and he's saying he emailed them, the photos in the phone are date stamped in the properties. So he could say, yeah, I have those photos, but it'll be date stamped, and it'll be able to tell us what date he took the photos, if the corrections were done properly or not.
Yeah, I don't know if he has those photos, if he has that phone, or where he stands with that, that's something I'm definitely going to be looking into.
And I think it's great, I just have to tell you that we've been doing this for quite some time now, over a year and a half, that we've been looking into appeals and having people before us. And it's always heartbreaking to see somebody show up when, if you would have been watching a few of the appeals, you would have known what information you had to show up here with, because it's, this is it. You know, your next appeal is to the supervisors, but if you don't present the evidence to us, you can't go to them with it. So, I mean, it's sad to see people show up, and they could have brought more information, and they didn't know, and they didn't do it. So I, that's basically where we're at right now, is I'm going to need to bring it back, talk to the commissioners, and see what they want to do with the vote.
Once again, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
It seems to me, I don't think we have formally made the motion for reconsideration.
We did before we let him come in. We told him, before we went to lunch, we took a vote to reopen to consider.
To reopen, but, but, you know, we have in our, in our procedures why there are definite rules for reconsideration, and that, I think we ought to watch all our pieces.
So based on what you've heard here today, do you want to make a motion to reconsider?
I would like to make a motion to reconsider our decision from this morning and request a waiver from both the planning department and the appellant as to, that we can reconsider that on the same day that we made our initial determination, because our rules state that we're going to set it for a next day, next date certain.
I think the rules assume that the motion was made after the hearing was over.
Yeah, no, it does, I just think it, to clear everything, if both sides waive any problems with.
I'm not opposed to doing that, I think it's better just to cover the bases.
Yeah, so I do make a motion to reconsider, subject to the stipulation.
The planning department would waive our, have it be heard today.
And Mr. Gibowitz has waived his, right, as well?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now you've made a motion to reconsider with your waivers on record.
Yep.
Is there a second? There is no second.
I thought we already reconsidered.
We voted to reopen the hearing, but not to reconsider the vote.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, there are two different issues. Okay, so, being that there is a lack of a second, I, I just have to say this, I am going to second it, for the reason that I believe that we've had a hearing here, we've taken in extra testimony that I would like on the record, and the vote can go down, but at least we are going to acknowledge that we had a, opened, reopened the hearing, we heard more evidence, and we took a vote on it. I feel, I would feel more comfortable with doing that, so I'm going to say we have a motion, the chair has seconded, and what is the policy about chair, motioning or seconding? Hold on one second, because I know there's.
I didn't know there was a policy about the motion, about the chair.
Okay, if the chair makes the motion, they have to stand down as chair through that process, but I didn't make the motion, so we're good. Okay, I just had to replay that in my head, sorry.
Clarification.
Yes, sir.
When we're using the term reconsidered, we're not saying.
We're not deciding.
Agree one way or the other.
Correct.
We have, we've made our decision before, I'm, I'm moving that we reconsider that.
We're reconsidering the vote that we took earlier in the day, and do we still want to reaffirm that vote, or actually?
But that's going to be the next step.
Second step.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right now, all we're doing is.
Reconsidering.
Reconsidering.
I would agree to reconsider it.
Okay.
So, you want to go vote on that?
Yep, so, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
Okay, so it carries three-two. So, we have made a motion to reconsider, now based on the new evidence that we have, does anybody want to make a motion? We have to make a motion now, because we are reconsidering.
Reconsidering.
To uphold this appeal or deny it, so I need a.
Let's discuss.
You want to discuss it?
I'd like to discuss.
Okay, you go.
Yeah. Rarely have I seen the, the planning department and code compliance as devoid of facts as we have in this case. It, it appears clear that there wasn't a complete set of proof of corrections received within ten days, and the appellant has the burden of proof of satisfying the requirements for us to grant his appeal. I personally believe the appellant, and he has stated facts that to me satisfy me, that these corrections were made within the ten-day period, even if proof was not supplied, and so I would be prepared to grant the appeal.
Okay, so I believe that, I'm glad the appellant showed up, I'm glad we gave him a second chance to present, but I believe that the evidence was not substantial enough to reconsider my decision from earlier. I think that more evidence should have been provided to us, and the, the burden of proof is on the appellant to bring that, that forward. I mean, tracking down the friend, getting the dates on the photos, anything more would have been helpful for me to change my mind, I really, you know, I've, I've got an open heart to Butte Fire victims, but I also have to rule based on the evidence before me, and I don't have enough to make me overturn my decision.
I have to agree, and I'd like to applaud Mr. Watts for, he is now writing it on their forms, their date, they've, they're signing it, he signed it, it's his responsibility to make sure it got there. So, yes, he hired somebody else, friend, whatever, to do, I shouldn't say hired, expected, asked somebody else to do it, it is still his responsibility to make sure that it's done on that day. He didn't bring in proof today of the email, he didn't prove in pictures that they were taken before then, the pictures he brought in today, he says they were taken two weeks ago, I tend to believe you, but they don't even have a date stamp on them, so my decision stands as it was before.
I have a little bit different issue, I'm, I'm not sure we've covered all the bases with the, what's the water board involvement on this thing? Are we not supposed to be getting that clarified?
He did not factor the water board in any way in the denial of this application.
No, not in the denial, except that apparently it does affect the milling permits. Is that actually true? They need a WID number or something?
In certain situations, the, the Public Works Department does require water, some water board paperwork to be able to apply, is my understanding.
Would you need that for an electrical permit on the shed?
No.
No, that was for the grading permit.
Yeah, he was talking about.
Is that, is that accurate, though, he would need?
Very, very well could be, that, that is, that is a requirement at times, however, that was, doesn't appear to have been one of our reasons for denial either, so.
I, I think I'm going to have to agree with my commissioner to my right, she's, doesn't happen very often. And I, and I almost feel like apologizing to the appellant, because, yeah, you've got quite a story, but you sure as heck didn't bring the proof. This is your trial day, not a month from now, it's today, and the planning department sent you tons of pieces of paper that you apparently got, and you just don't have the proof, you didn't follow the ten-day rule, you didn't do a lot of things. You do sound like a really honest guy, and these deadlines weren't met, and I'm just going to have to vote to deny the appeal as we did before.
Well, there's three violations, four violations here, the posting, the fencing, the generator, and the shed. The, the posting should have been done long before the property was inspected, the same with the fencing, the same with the generator, the same with the shed. What's happening here is that when code compliance goes out, people are essentially given a second chance, which the code does not require. And that second chance is meet the strict requirements of the ten-day deadline, and essentially, you, you may obtain your registration even though you were clearly not in compliance with urgency ordinance from day one. And in this circumstance, there simply was not the proof of compliance within the ten days, as has been pointed out. And so I don't think that we have any choice but to affirm the denial.
Okay, I do want to say thank you for coming, showing up, and to the commissioners for at least reconsidering, I think it was fair to give him an opportunity to present, because he did miss that opportunity. I'm sorry it didn't turn out for you, but at least we did give you that opportunity to present, so thank you for sticking around for that. So I think we're ready for our recommendation, I'm going to, we've already closed, gone to reconsideration, and now we're ready for a recommendation. Is there any changes to the resolution, or we, we already had all that, we're good. We need to, we need to read it one more time so we can vote, I'm sorry, there's no changes, because we haven't changed anything. Thank you, Officer Watts.
At the planning department, uh, the planning department requests that the planning commission make a motion to deny two oh one six nine two nine appeal, holding the planning director's denial of commercial cannabis cultivation registration in twenty sixteen nine two nine.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, four one, let's, Commissioner Ladish opposing, and so you have fifteen days from today to file an appeal to the Board of Supervisors and take your case forward. Okay, thank you. Do you need, wait, do you need your colored photos back? No? Okay, thank you.
Well, this should be part of the record, then, once, uh.
Right.
And who moved and seconded that?
That was Commissioner Wooster and Sisk.
Commissioner Sisk made the motion I seconded.
Okay.
I, I didn't second her motion.
I said Wooster and Sisk. Don't get so defensive.
At least she understands.
Okay. But you did agree with her, okay, so there are no informational items, there are no study sessions, but I would like to hear some commissioner reports today. Have you been out and about in the communities and have anything wonderful to report in your district?
I just want to report that anybody who wants to donate to Central Fire, Central Calaveras Fire, to keep the fire station fully staffed, is welcome to do so, to go to centralcalaverasfirefightersassociation.org, and all the details are there.
Very good. Commissioner Bocelli, what's going on in your district?
Well, I was snooping around a house in my neighboring district, and there's a, there's a grow house I want to turn in.
Okay, but you have a new.
We don't, we don't do that in my district.
You have a hall that just opened up you'd like to report out on?
We have a very large veterans' hall with a gigantic stage, and if you want some donations there, we got to get some donations for lights, camera, sound systems, things like that, it's, but it's, it's a beautiful building.
Very good. Commissioner Sisk?
I have nothing in my, nothing.
Nothing's happened.
Commissioner Wooster?
Nothing to report.
Okay, well, things are looking, things are looking pretty bleak in my neighborhood, because we rely on tourism, and we don't have any snow, so our vacation runners weren't as thick and happy as we'd like them to be. But other than that, I think everything's good, and we all need some snow and some water, and it was really warm, and the beetles hatched, and we're flying, and then it got freezing cold to like twenty degrees, so I hope that they fall out of the sky, and that we slow down some bark beetle based on not rain, but based on they froze to death and died. There's my report. Okay, so on that note, our planning director has nothing to report, Annette is going to tell us that we're coming back in two weeks, and?
On the eighth.
We're going to come back on the eighth.
We've got a, a shorter agenda.
Okay.
It'll be nice.
Okay, I think we handled today's agenda very, very well. I never expected to get out of here at this hour of two-thirty. Thank you all, have a great day, meetings adjourned. Julie, thank you, Susan, Scott.